Kirk is supposed to start his live.
He's gonna start us.
I don't know how I'm supposed to get notified.
(laughing).
I'll, I'll try to look. How do I look?
(laughing). The other thing we could do is walk out the door.
You make me blush, you make me blush.
There, the old fashioned way.
Thanks for volunteering.
It says now live, yeah.
Now live.
It does say now live?
Yeah.
Yeah. We just want live.
I just wanted you to get up and.
Get some exercise, you know. Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting today, Tuesday, August 23rd, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, as we look at this morning's agenda, are there any adjustments to the agenda? I have been notified of one. If you look at 6C, Human Resources, we'd like to pull 6C, and that needs to be discussed at the PHHS meeting next month, prior to coming here. So, we're pulling 6C. Any other adjustments? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Svolson. Is there support?
If I can, please.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this point, we have our public comment period, and this is an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak this morning? Come right up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good morning. Been a long time since I've seen you guys. Arvis Thompson, the new District Four. I have some questions or thoughts, comments about public health and some of the proposals that you're being asked to consider, and I'm wondering if that 6C is part of that set of proposals.
That is a job description.
Yeah.
Just so you're aware.
Yeah, okay, that's what I figured. Because there's no agendas available, that's why I'm asking. You're reviewing that job description for a behavioral health supervisor, and so these comments may come as something that you're already looking at, is why you pulled it, but anyway. Currently, this community has those services being provided under the Sawtooth Clinic. My, I'm wondering what isn't being provided through Sawtooth that you believe public health needs or can do equal or better than what Sawtooth currently is? If something is missing or needs fixing, have we worked through what those needs are from both sides of that question first? Is it cost-effective to take this on? The implications of adding another supervisor and more divisions are many. From the top on down, we begin to see the need for more staff to handle the workload and more work because of the staff load, and on it goes round and round. Means reviewing the jobs, reclassifying, more wages, et cetera. This additional staff person would bring the number of divisions and supervisors up to a total of six. Your chart of employees in Public Health and Human Services is getting longer and wider, and I'm wondering at what point is that ever going to stop? Are we really getting what we think we're paying for? You're adding a temporary staff person to do, I believe you called it SDS training, and yet there are staff already in that chart that are doing SDS. Does this mean that those people don't know what they're doing and haven't been doing it while this new person, or this old employee is coming back to train and get them up to date on data entry? So, I'm wondering why you're adding or bringing back somebody to do the job that these people should have already been doing. There is an initiative out there called Rural, Rural Child Care Innovation, and it's exploring ways to keep childcare staff and generate more childcare spots. The proposal says that you're using fund balance in order to pay, potentially pay, private, public, nonprofit, and for-profit, five dollars and seventy-nine cents an hour in wages to try to entice people to stay. And it says that they are not taxpayer dollars, yet I, I don't understand. What is a fund balance for? You're saying you're going to use up to, up to $360,000 of the fund balance. Where does the money that goes into a fund balance come from? Your reports suggest increased revenues and collections and lower than anticipated spending in that department, which means somebody budgeted more money than what they needed and they spent more money than what they thought they were going to, which aren't those taxpayer And as I said, what is the fund balance for? If you spend it, won't you have to replace it? And how are you gonna replace it? Through tax dollars? You put a limit of one year on this wage stipend, and what guarantee is that this will only be a year? What criteria are you using to determine who gets five dollars and seventy-nine cents an hour, or is it across the board? So, the thirteen dollar an hour person and the eighteen dollar an hour person are equal? Public, private, government, providers, all the same? Nonprofit, for-profit as well? Any divisions, any? Did I read that the childcare coordinator, which is a new position, is also a one-year temp job? And you are looking potentially at the current family and children's services supervisor as a logical person to take this on? According to your department hierarchy chart, this supervisor will go from seven staff to two staff, allowing sufficient time and bringing knowledge of county department functioning along with family and children's services background to the job. She hits the ground running. But if you don't create the new behavioral health position, the childcare coordinator is still a one-year temporary job. As I looked at the SMART goals, it occurs to me that half the goals, three of the six, should have already been standard practice. And if not, why not? They're basics. You offer professional, professional support and education for childcare providers. You explore financial support options for children, and you identify facility options within the county. Those seem like should be standard practice. Don't need to claim them as a goal, it's like reinventing the wheel. Two ideas were creative: pool of individuals who could be substitute providers and enticing our high school students to enter into the early childhood. Did I see anywhere how the low-income family or those with no reasonable access to childcare are going to be helped? More openings is not going to make childcare affordable, maybe accessible, unless there is a plan to subsidize the cost, you'll forever have children and families without childcare. Minimum wage, minimum wage jobs are just minimum wage jobs. I love the parent quotes in there. Fifty years ago, I lived those very same statements. We schedule our work around our children and we schedule our children around our work. I didn't see my husband for months. He worked nights, I worked days, and yes, I stayed home because we couldn't find childcare for a time. Did our children suffer? Not that anyone knows. Would I recommend any one way for anyone? No. Did we get creative? Yes. Did my employer understand and work with me? I was fortunate? Yes. Can you make the best of what seems an almost impossible situation? You bet. Before you continue on with these plans to add more staff and rearrange the checkerboard, please consider this. Right now, there is one public health and human services staff person for every 175 people in Cook County. Those people are newborns and ninety-five years old and in the nursing home. Many of them don't need, don't know, don't want, don't, couldn't find Health and Human Services if you asked them to. So, who are you really serving? How many people are we got as a ratio here of staff to people in the community? When does enough become enough? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other individuals that would like to make public comment this morning? If you'll come forward and sign in and state your name and address for the board.
Yes, hello, my name is Colton Thompson. I am in between housing situations at the moment, so I'm trying to figure out how I can pay my bills and afford my food and whatnot and take care of my family and the ones that are close to me. I'm not here to point fingers like a lot of people have for the past many decades. I'd also like to thank everyone for taking time out of their schedule to be here and those who are watching to take the time to educate themselves on what's going on. I personally know of a couple people my age, twenty to thirty years old, that have children that cannot afford childcare at the rate that it is. And my friend's wife, they're recently married, congrats to them, she has to stay home and take care of the kids all day while he goes and works because it's just not feasible for them to afford to have childcare, their kids at the Y, whatnot, what have you. I know many other families that have been here for years, decades, you know, grounded in the community, they're looking at leaving because of the taxation policies and it's the amount of spending that's occurring around here, and I'm just wondering how it's feasible that county with such a small number of people can afford such large increases in staff and wages and with the rise of inflation and the cost of gas and just the average family having to pay an extra $300 at the pump to get to and from work and $250 a week at the grocery store. You add that on top of this $360,000 or whatever, and all the other things that are gonna come along with it, I'm just wondering how it's feasible for anyone my age, up to forty, fifty years old, to be able to afford to support their family and keep their home and be a proud member of Cook County and/or Grand Ray. Because right now, everyone I talk to is saying that they have to leave and they're being left with no choice but to basically be forced out and have to go somewhere else. So, my family's well, well-grounded in this community. I'd like to stay here for the foreseeable future. I like this county, I like this town, it's a great place, it's full of great people, but we need to start cutting back and getting down to the nitty-gritty of what needs to happen and what doesn't, because I personally see a lot of gaps that need to be filled that aren't, and then just jobs and whatnot that are being created that I really don't see a need for. As Ms. Thompson mentioned, there have been coordinators and such up here that have done their job for years, and they seem to be doing it pretty well. And I guess I'd just like you guys to take that into consideration. I'm here to represent the younger part, the youth, the, your sons, your daughters, your friends, your family, my friends that are my age group of this county, because we're basically being left with no choice but to leave. I really like this place and I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to leave, neither does anyone else. So, thank you for your time. You guys have a good day.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Are there any other members of the public who are here for public comment? Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the public comment section and go on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So, move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, our public hearing isn't until 9:00 AM, so we're going to jump down to Item Five, which is maintenance. And Brian Silences is here to speak a little bit with us about Arena Specialists, a quote received. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning. So, as you know, we've been working at the community center trying to get the ice machine fired up again after sitting for two years, which is not always good for the equipment to sit there, but we're down to the last of the four compressors that needs to be replaced. So, I would like to answer any questions, but I'd like to get permission to move ahead with replacing this last compressor that needs to be fired up. And the price I have is $7,959.
All right, any discussion, questions for Brian?
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd just like to add, we, we have been, Sarah Waddle and I met with members of the Carling Club recently to talk about their plans for the season, and they are hoping to have their first bonsai around Halloween. And so, in order for, for us to stick to that timeline and enable them to, to start at that time, we would need to get the, the repair done in a timely way so that it's ready to go for, for the end of October.
Thank you for that information. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I realize it's nice to have the last one done now. We know that all four are going to be working now, right?
Yes.
At our last community center meeting, somebody mentioned that the roof was leaking. So, what's the plan to fix that?
Well, that's part of our long-range plan with CRBPS. We've looked at the roof, we've talked about the roof. It was replaced about fifteen years ago, and some of the shingles did blow off this last winter, and we've replaced them and patched them, so right now, it's not leaking.
Okay.
But CRBPS is gonna work with us and come up with a plan.
Okay, so I, that's what I wanted to make sure, it wasn't leaking today, and nobody said that at the meeting, that it was just, it's leaking, oh.
No, we fixed it, I think, two times this summer, we've had shingles blow off.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Hawkins, we, we know, I mean, there, the roof is getting old, and we know that it's something, I mean, this, what Brian did and his staff did recently to, to replace those shingles is kind of like a temporary fix. We know that we need a longer-term solution there. I think we've got some sheathing, that's probably not in good condition, so we're gonna have to do a more, a longer-term fix to the roof, but for now, I mean, we've done what we can do at this time.
Yeah, actually, there were a few things that came up in that meeting of repairs that need to be done at, up there, and it's like, okay, those are gonna cost us a lot, we have to be thinking about all of our spending in relation to that.
And that's why the development of the CIP is so important, because it'll allow us to prioritize that and have estimates for replacement costs and so on.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian, what, can you remind us how long these should, the compressors should last?
I don't have a guess, but this one's been, this one has been rebuilt a couple of times since 1992 when it was put in, so I'm not sure. The other ones have slowly been replaced through the years, so if they last fifteen years, maybe? That's just a guess.
No.
We tried to maintain them, we have Rink Tech come up once a year and go through everything and try to keep it as best we can, but things do wear out, so.
Mm-hmm. It was, I'm sorry, it was just striking to me how they, they've gone one after the other, so it's just for future, you know, planning, it's good to know they all, all last about the same amount of time there.
But they get used at different phases, you know?
Okay.
There's four of them, so two of them will work for so long, and then two more will work, and then they alternate back and forth, so that's kind of the time limit where they wear out.
Yeah.
Well, clearly, it will be nice that we have a capital improvement plan that's looking out many years in advance, and we can schedule things and prepare and plan for these types of things, and I think we're all looking forward to that. Other questions or comments? Not, I would entertain a motion.
I, I do have another question, just, is this, is this coming out of the maintenance budget, then?
It would be, yes.
That is correct.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Arena Specialists.
All right, we have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Item Six, Human Resources. Good morning, Leah.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us. I have a couple of items now on the agenda, and I have Mr. Bob Thompson here to talk about Item A, a recommendation for a promotion for Kyle Monson of Appraiser One. He was hired as an appraiser trainee last year, and with his skill and growth, he clearly meets the qualifications for Appraiser One, and we are recommending promoting him to Appraiser One. May I know, Bob?
I'm available if you guys have any questions. I can speak to it, Leah kind of covered it, you know, he's been here since October 4, 2021. He's currently doing the same functions as an appraiser one. Our office is so fluid that, you know, we go from calling and verifying on sales to inspecting properties during the quintile to, you know, processing the appeals and the appeal season, and they, they really have been doing the same functions. We, we kind of created and posted the position as a trainee so we could broaden our pool and, and have more candidates, hopefully more local candidates, which is exactly what we got, then we didn't have to deal with the housing issue. And, you know, a lot of times in, in the interviews with the trainee positions, we were getting questions, you know, what is the end game? You know, you, you train somebody and then, you know, what's the next move? And that's why I, I'm bringing forward this recommendation to promote, so hopefully, we can retain and, and not have open positions, that obviously causes a lot of strain on our office.
Mr. Thompson, I'm just wondering for the public if you could explain a little bit about what happens during, for a trainee during that period?
Yeah, so with, with the trainee, essentially, what we're doing is we're saying we're willing to take anybody, even if they don't have, you know, a lot of relevant experience, which Kyle did come in with, I think, nine years of, of mortgage background, so he was familiar with looking at appraisals and, you know, the process of valuation to some extent, and, you know, has some familiarity with, you know, the cost of mortgage and all that type of real estate-related background. So, when we, when we took Kyle in, you know, essentially, we started from scratch one. We've put him in some education classes, we go through and kind of teach them each step of the process and, you know, take it one, one function at a time. So, currently, you know, we're out doing the quintile inspections. We went out and, and did property inspections with Kyle for a week, showed him what we're gathering while we're out there, showed him how to approach the house, and all of the different functions of, of being an appraiser essentially are taught for, for, to somebody who doesn't have any background or, or history. So, really, Kyle has been doing the functions of an appraiser, but was hired as a trainee because he didn't have any, any history or background.
All right, well, that's very helpful to know how he's been provided opportunities for education and lots of experience with great guidance and support, so I appreciate that explanation. Any questions or comments from other commissioners? Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think this is great that we can promote people in, within our departments. I mean, that's kind of the, maybe the first goal we have before we put an ad out for a vacancy, so I think this is great that you have recommended him for this, and, and we'll look forward to, you know, him working with you in the office and being able and willing to be out there when you need him.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with, with Commissioner Storley, and just have a little technical question as far as it not being in the budget for 2022. When, when would this promotion come into effect, and, and how would that play into the budget?
So, I guess, I think that's kind of the discretion of the board. I did make this recommendation around the beginning of July, and, you know, the, the whole intent behind this is to retain the employee that we have in place, it's been working out great. So, you know, I, I guess I would leave that decision up to the board. My recommendation, you know, dates back to July 1st, so, you know, I think that Kyle will be happy if the promotion's approved, and, you know, I'm not sure if, if it goes back to July 1st, or if it's as effective as of today, or if you, you know, set some other date. But one thing I will say is, looking back at the assessor's budget over the last three years at least, we've never hit our, our, our projected budget, and that's primarily due to turnover in positions of the appraiser. That position's turned over four times since 2019, and we, we've always had a shortfall of what we've projected our budgets to be, so it's, it's kind of a, an ebb and flow, but I'm hoping that we don't have turnover again where then we end up short on the budget, because again, that just causes additional strain, you know, overtime hours for, for my staff and I, and just kind of, starting overtraining somebody is not desirable.
Yes, yes, it's a lot of work and very expensive. I really appreciate your, your explanation there. And I guess, I guess my question is more to the point of this, this promotion would likely result in a over, overspending of the budget this, this year, or? I, I understand, we, we absolutely want to retain, and, and I think it's, it's very appropriate, just like Commissioner Storley mentioned, but I'm just trying to figure out the, the details there of, of implementation, so. And again, maybe that's, like Assessor Thompson said, it might be for the board to decide how, how this is managed. I would think we'd want to do it as soon as possible, considering the, the July 1st recommendation. I would also be open to, excuse me, back, back paying for that, but considering it wasn't in the budget, then, then that's something we have to decide and discuss.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
I have a question, I guess, about process, then. So, Assessor Thompson recommend, made this recommendation on July 1st. Does this go to the personnel committee? Is that, I mean, how did, how did it get from that to here?
So, I can base that and also talk a little bit too about a start date. I mean, I'm at the discretion of the board, however they want to handle that, but typically, a promotion would then occur once the board has approved it. It wouldn't, typically, our practice is not to backdate promotions and hires for things like that. It would be going forward. And our handbook lays out how we do promotion process. It is a competitive process, so it is posted internally for at least ten days, discussed, he does have, you know, talks with his department head, talks with the administration, talks with Human Resources, and then goes forward. So, it doesn't go through typically through the personnel.
Okay.
Nor do any of the hiring process, unless we were opening up a brand-new job description or something along those lines, then it would go through the personnel committee.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I just need to see the steps.
That's helpful.
Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Leah, for that explanation, too, as far as when it's most appropriate to do that.
Yeah, that's just kind of how it's gone in the past, so.
I think that's very valuable. Thank you.
Actually, just as a side point of somebody who used to do payroll here, I would like it to start at the very beginning of the next pay cycle, instead of the middle of the cycle, because that creates a lot of paperwork.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins.
That's a great suggestion. So, that would be my suggestion. The next pay period is when this promotion would start.
Other questions? Commissioner Mills.
Just really appreciate your experience there and that advice. I think that's very valuable.
And on behalf of Nick Horner, thank you.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Spalison.
I'd like a motion to promote Kyle Munson to position of Appraiser One at the, at the next, beginning of the next pay period.
Thank you so much. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Glad to have a fully-staffed office.
Yeah, us, too.
We are, too.
We're pleased that you do, too.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll go on to item B.
Okay, yeah, all right. I wasn't sure since it was nine.
We'll just finish up with that.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much. And then, last item on here is an agreement for temporary employment of case aid for Public Health and Human Services. As the board may be aware, it isn't, we don't need board approval for our policies for hiring temporary staff, but we do want to inform the board, especially in the interest of transparency and especially with the staff turnover to explain why we need to bring in past staff to assist with trainings, especially in these nuanced positions, that there isn't a lot of backfill for lack of a better word there. So, we have been speaking with Sarah Hadley and I have Allison McIntyre of PHHS with me today to talk in more details about what the substance use disorder, financial eligibility determination, and data entry is.
Congratulations on being able to say that all in one breath. All right. Thank you so much. Allison, thank you for being with us this morning.
Absolutely, thank you and good morning, Commissioners. So, Sarah Hadley, as you know, left her position with PHHS in mid-May. Since that time, her position has been backfilled. It's in the process, I would say, still of being backfilled with Melissa Wickwire, starting in June. She started out part-time and will be ramping up her hours to full-time in September. In Sarah's transition, we looked to reallocate some of those duties, both temporarily and long-term, around the financial eligibility determinations for substance use disorder treatment and assessment services. So, as you know, we contract with Greg Barnier in Wilderness Outpatient Services and are the license holder for that program. We're very proud that we're able to offer that very high-quality service of chemical health assessments and treatment options here in Cook County. A part of our contract agreement is that we provide administrative support for the program around licensing and policies. We also determine funding for various funding streams that allow community members to access treatment services at free or low cost. There are a number of different funding streams through the state that we administer, one being the Behavioral Health Fund. A part of this role is also working with insurance plans to determine eligibility for treatment services. In Sarah's transition, she provided a great deal of training materials and written instructions for this process, which involves entry in a number of different systems, state systems, for entering financial eligibility, including our electronic health record, which is unique to our department here. With Sarah's transition out, she didn't have sufficient time to adequately cross-train current staff on all of the details and nuances of that program. Sarah, in conversation, is willing to come back on a very short-term, part-time basis, up to five hours a week through the end of the year, to help us get caught up on the data entry and eligibility determinations that have occurred since that time. We don't have anyone on staff now who is fully trained and able to do this work. So, Sarah is willing to come on and help us get caught up and cross-train a number of different staff so that we have a sufficient backup and cross-training across our team. Another factor for us is with Alyssa's resignation, which you acknowledged on the consent agenda this morning. That's another complicating factor, as our hope is that Alyssa would take this on primarily going forward. So, we'll have to, again, pause as we backfill Alyssa's position and grateful that we have Sarah on board for a few months to help cross-train two new staff on this process. Happy to address any other questions that the board might have about this temporary agreement. I'll just say to Leah's point that while it's not required to bring forward the temporary staffing hires, it has been our practice in PHHS. We've done this a number of times over the years as we've had staff transition out due to resignation or on short-term medical leaves as well.
I just want to thank you for your transparency and making sure that everybody is very clear and aware of the situation. And your explanation was very, very helpful. So, thank you. And I'm sure members of the public greatly appreciate that as well. Commissioner Spalison.
Yeah, I also would like to applaud your transparency in letting people know what we're doing, why we're doing it. And also, I see the need and I understand it. I mean, we've all taken great pride when you've let us know that your audits have come back and been, you know, very, very strong performance and continued strong performance. And so, to me, I see this as an effort to maintain that. And it's not just something we're doing so that when they come and audit that, you know, it looks good on, you know, the staff and the board. But no, this is, this is to ensure that we're providing all the services in the timeliness and effectiveness for the public. And the audit is required to come in to validate that that's actually occurring. And so, I applaud the efforts to maintain that high level and the high standards that you've set. And I support this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other questions? Commissioner Mills.
I just want to point out, thank you, Allison, for that explanation. It was very thorough and very good. I just wanted to point out that this is a pretty unique opportunity to have someone who's trained and willing to come back and fill this in. And we're kind of in a tight spot, especially considering Alyssa's resignation there. So, yeah, I think we're just very fortunate to have this opportunity to kind of keep things moving. So, thank you for reaching out and bringing this forward to us.
Other discussion or questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I don't believe a motion's in order. I believe this is.
We can just recommend?
Yeah, I think this was for information only. I don't think we should set a precedent to approve something that is for information for the board.
That's a really good point.
Just my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Spalison. I think you are absolutely right on. All right, well, we will thank you for sharing the information with us and being so transparent and providing our public with the information that's needed. Thank you so much, Allison.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you to Sarah for being willing to come back and help us out.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right.
Well, thanks very much.
Thank you so much, Leah. All right, well, we will get ready for our public hearing. And we'll give just a minute for people to leave if they need to exit. So, this morning, our public hearing is regarding the Arrowhead Road Subordinate Service District. And we had an opportunity last month to have a petition brought forward. And maybe Mr. Powers, if you would like to say anything as we get started.
Yes, Madam Chair. So, this is under statute that the county board can create a subordinate service district to provide services of a manner that we already do provide, but may not be provided in a certain way or in a certain area. And that's the case here. They're looking to improve the road, the Arrowhead, the end of the Arrowhead Trail Road, and to use the special assessment process for allocating those costs. And there's two methods under the statute. You can do it by petition, so if there's enough petitioners, or the county board can do it under their own authority. The statute's not clear on the petition. It says a qualified voter. There's no definition. We've looked for decades and had many opinions. Is it a registered voter in Cook County, in Minnesota, in the country? Is it an eligible voter, so forth? So, what we've done is use the petition process to inform the board on the popularity, let's say, the support for it. So, we're using the petition authority, but it's actually being approved under the county board's authority. And in this case, they have provided petitions. I tried to send you a copy of the update of what I have. Stephen will talk about it. To, but I failed this, I can't get connected to do that to you. But I made it, I had made a few copies if anybody wants.
I like that old-fashioned way. Thank you.
So.
So, just for the public, the petition included territorial boundaries. There was a very nice map of the proposed district and also some estimates. And we've seen letters with that, along with the proposed McFarland Lake map. And we've done a lot of reading, looking at the statute and looking at our own processes.
So, there's actually, there's 61 property ID numbers in the area that they've outlined. That's one of the requirements. It's that you outline a specific area to be covered. And on this, three pages, the first section are the people that had signed the petition. And often, it was both parties, so we had many more signatures. You know, husband, wife, et cetera. And sometimes, there were four members of a family who all signed. But these are the properties that go along with the signings. And then below that, the proposal is to not special assess those that do not have improved properties. They don't have driveways, they don't have buildings. And so, that's a small list underneath. So, there were 26 properties with signers. Seven, they proposed not to pay the assessments initially until they would improve their properties. And then down below is kind of a summary of everyone, all those 61 parcels. And then, in red, are those that we were not able, or did not respond to the letter and the notice. A couple of them came back just without an address. And Stephen, we're getting updates like all day yesterday from some people, and Stephen may have an update to this. So, this shows 20 not heard from. It was 22 yesterday morning. Two came in during the day that actually signed the petition. And on these red, 27 of them are proposed to not pay the assessment. So, there'd be 13 that were not contacted on this list or did not respond, who would be paying under the assessment. And the public hearing is to just, is to hear the public on this. It's a requirement before the board could approve a district. And then, we would actually approve it by resolution. You may or may not do it today. We might do it at another meeting if you so choose, because I don't have one prepared at the moment. And then, you could also approve the method by which it's financed. We have several in our policy. It could be by valuation, it could be by owner, by lot. They're proposing, and there are other methods, to do it by distance. So, over this 1.7 miles to go on a measure. And then, each, as a percentage, their distance of the total distance to pay their share of the costs. And maybe I should stop and let Stephen talk, but I know there's an initial proposal to fix the road up. So, that would not continue. So, there's like, they need some initial work on culverts and gravel, et cetera. And then, it would be for general maintenance until there is more special work to be done. And maybe I'll stop there if you have anything.
Absolutely. Well, I think it's time to open up for our public hearing to the public. And if those of you would like to come forward, and you can sign in, state your name and address, and share your comments with the board.
Shall I start then?
That would be great. Thank you.
And it should say, the policy is that each district have a representative. And Stephen Ollie has volunteered for that position.
And that's a two-year position.
And, yeah. And we've not heard any objections. He's taken the leadership role. And it's a lot of work, so.
It is. That is for sure.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Brady, thank you for, you know, the previous meeting where I submitted the petition and for the public hearing today. There are some notes. I was just gonna, just for a little more of a brief history, quick, kind of like I told you there at the last meeting, but, you know, the rationale for submitting the petition. I've been an owner, rebuilt up there in 1991 for about 31 years. And the road was the private, we're talking about this private Arrowhead Trail Road, which, you know, starts just after the bridge and then goes back, back to the point where the road was built back, just, I think, prior to when I built up there, a couple of years back before that. And the road was built, put in by a guy named Marshburn Steel that had a plaque of 16 lots of property on McFarland Lake there that he was developing. And I, you know, I purchased one of them. And so, that road initially just served those 16 lots that were at the end of the, end of that road. And then, over time, people developed driveways off of the road and to their properties. And there is several spur access roads that then later came off of the road there as people bought up more property on the lake. And a lot of it was, the access roads were to provide access, or road access for properties and landowners that previously had property there but was only available by water access, you know, for the road going back. So, up now, to date now, I think there's like 48 landowners that have access to property off of that road. So, it's grown over the years. And so, and then initially, the road is, you know, it's kind of rough to begin with and, you know, getting back there. But over the years, individual property owners have kind of tried to help maintain the road or fix up repairs, you know, and there's washouts and needed to call, that type of thing. And, you know, as there's more people up there, we kind of, an individual owner or two would go around and say, try to collect some money from people and then say, oh, we can fix it up with what we got. And, you know, the history is always, you know, some people contribute, some didn't. And it became even more complicated as there are more landowners. A lot of the owners have come from way out of state. They're only up there seasonally. And, you know, to try to contact with them, the big problem was having the contact information to even be able to get a hold of them, you know. So, at any rate, road, you know, continued to kind of be a challenge to maintain with Mother Nature and washouts. And then, there's a time, I think about 15 years ago, one of my neighbors here, Myron Burshane, he worked with a firewise grant because a big issue was, you know, emergency equipment and firefighting equipment able to get back there, you know, to fight fires after the blowdown that we had. You know, there's, you know, more fire danger. And then, if we needed an emergency vehicle, like an ambulance, to come in, it was very difficult. And so, that was a matching thing, too. And Myron worked, contacted as many people as he could. And again, some contributed, some. And again, some contributed, some didn't. They got matching funds. They beefed the road up, put some turnoffs in, or turnouts in, and then a big turnaround at the end, you know, so that emergency equipment could get in there. And I think that was a big issue, and it remains that today. And since that point in time, not a lot has been done, and it's, road's now kind of back in shape where it's very difficult for emergency equipment to get in and even difficult for landowners to get in there, you know, unless you have a high-马力 SUV for parts of the road, so forth. So that's a little history of why, you know, I was made aware by Myron that in 2019, he passed this county policy aligned with the state statutes to allow landlords petition the county for creating the sub-district and maintaining the road or fixing, maintaining the road. And then to spread the cost equitably out over the owners. So that's the point where we are. I submitted petition at the meeting, last meeting in July. And, you know, today I've had pretty good support. I've tried to contact us. Well, I have actually sent out a mailing to every landowner and then followed up with another mailing or in combination with email of contact or so forth to be transparent with everybody and elicit support or, you know, what their thoughts were on it. And today I've had, I think, of the 48 owners, we've got 26 that have signed the petition and other four that have sent emails or to create about, they're in support of it. So we have like 30 of 48, so about 62 percent of the people are, that are able to contact, supported. As Brady said, there's like 20 people on his list that haven't responded one way or another. Of those 20, I've talked to, I've talked to all but 13, either on the phone or by mail, email, and so forth. And, you know, there's some varying degrees of support, but for the most part, most people were supportive in one manner or another, but maybe didn't follow through with, you know, an email or a petition signing. So I guess that's kind of where we're at. Yeah. I don't know if you have any questions with me, or I'll step back and then other people can call in.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That was a very good history lesson, if you will. Provides us and the public with some context.
I've been with this for the last three months.
All right. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak this morning? And you can sit right there. There is a microphone right there for you. Surely.
Thank you for hearing us this morning, Commissioners. I'm Matt Strode. I'm the second-last cabin on the end of McFarland Lake. I've been coming here for, being there, having for 45 years. And as I get younger, it gets a little harder to go down the road when it's not so good. And my main concern is we pay a fair amount of taxes. And I spent 35 years in the Hennepin County Sheriff's Emergency Squad responding to accidents and things. And that road right now for emergency equipment would be pretty tough. And I don't think, once the road is brought a little better up to grade, it's not something that has to be maintained monthly, whatever. It's mainly after heavy rainfalls. And I think once we get it up to grade, if a grader comes in there once in a while to grade it out, I think that would be sufficient or be a heck of a lot of improvement for what it is. It's pretty tough right now. And so we would appreciate your concern. If the county can help us with it, would be great. And whatever people that we have signed up are willing to chip in or do whatever you know, so. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Other members of the public? Any other members of the public to speak to the issue? Good morning.
So, thank you very much. I'll jump right into my comment. So, you know, Matt here is one of our elder statesmen. We're almost as old as Matt, but the point is, I bought in and built in 1987. 1987 is when we put the road in. There's a real rough road before that. So in the subsequent years, I believe it's been two or three times where we, as a group of landowners, informally raised money and tried to improve it. So it's clearly, it didn't work as a model. So with this new statute, I just think it's, it makes sense to organize these efforts and equitably share it. I'm at the very end of this proposed road. Then there is a fire truck turnaround right there. And so, you know, I strongly encourage you, if you can, to move ahead with this.
Thank you so much. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning?
Good morning. My name is Greg Gordon. I own the property at Seven Echo Woods. I've been there approximately 15 years. And I would just like to ask for your support on this resolution because I fully support it. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak this morning?
Good morning. My name is Jim Bullard. Our family's had a cabin on McFarland Lake for 48 years, going back to when we had to get to our lot by boat or hike in through the woods. Clearly, there's been a lot of changes. A lot more people, more traffic, a lot of it unregulated. It's time for a change. We need to do something about the road to make it safer, but also to control erosion that's running into the lake and so on. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It does not. If you would, sign in though, once you're done speaking. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bill. I'm herald officially on the thing, but don't tell too many people that, okay? I'm on 61 Echo Woods Road. So I just want to thank you for your time, energy, and your commitment to public service. And also Steve and Susan for their wonderful way of pushing this forward in a very great way and for their dedication and thoroughness in communication. It's been really wonderful. A slightly different comment, I'll make it quick, is that I've only been here eight years. I'm probably the youngest guy, maybe, I don't know. One of the younger members of the community there. And I've had two instances where my daughter, I had great hopes and dreams of my daughter coming up to visit. She was absolutely refusing to come on that road after being on it once. And then my brother-in-law coming to help me build the cabin actually had damage done to his vehicle. So, you know, there's this issue of safety and also, but just the sheer perpetuation of a dream I have is having people come up to my cabin. And without a decent road to get in, that won't happen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning?
Myron Bursham. I've been on McFarland Lake for about 29 years. Steve Ollie is my neighbor and was involved in a project in this road some time ago. And I think I mentioned at the meeting last month that with our turnouts, they're there for a purpose. We have almost two miles of road, and it's just one-way and no ditch. If you go in a ditch, you don't get out. And so we've had turnout so that if there is an emergency or for anything else, you can turn off or back up. And they're intermittent based upon a certain amount of distance, so it's not unmanageable. But those are for safety purposes. We've had a couple of fires. One required heavy equipment. We've had some ambulance rescues that couldn't be done. They had to come in by water. My main reason for addressing you this morning is I just want to commend Steve Ollie and Susan. They're my neighbors. And he's so conscientiously reached out to everyone, not high-pressure, just talking. He's put in countless hours doing something that's for the good of all of us. And so I really want to thank him and commend him and Susan for the work they've done. And I would say that there's a lot of support for this. We have people from all over the place, and it's a very remote area, but it's becoming, you know, a place where we want to have people visit. I currently can't have some of my family come in a certain car. I have to pick them up down at the bridge. And so I've had guests that I drive out for two miles to pick them up and bring them to my cabin. So this would be very helpful. And the main thing is to have equitable funding to pay for it. And so thank you for your work. Remember being up there and appreciate so much what you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Any other members of the public? Going once, going twice? We'll close the public hearing at this point in time. Thank you all very much. So according to statute, and I think we've all read a lot about our own private roadway maintenance policy and Minnesota statute 375B.05. And we have 30 days within the holding of this public hearing to create our resolution to approve or disapprove this establishment of this district. And I would like to recommend that we take some time at our September Committee of the Whole Meeting to talk about subordinate governmental service districts and then develop a resolution to be brought forward at the following board meeting, which would be September 27th. Any thoughts or discussion based on my remarks?
Madam Chair, did you say within 30 days?
Correct.
So that would be more than 30 days.
All right.
If you took action on the 27th of September.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
What else?
I really appreciate everyone's comments here today. It really helps us understand the situation and your needs out there. And we've seen all the letters of support and all the petitions names and the property IDs. And I guess I'd just like a little clarification, if possible, to understand numbers a little bit more. Otter Powers said there were 61 parcels. And then Mr. Ollie was talking about 48.
Owners.
Owners. 61 parcels, 48 owners. There are 13 not heard from yet, is what I took from that. Seven who were not included on this list but then reached out by Mr. Ollie and contacted. And it sounds like there's broad support. I'm just also curious about the flip side, if there are concerns and any opposing comments that you've heard or received. It would be helpful just to, you know, get the whole picture as well.
I can address that. In the conversations that I've had with the people who haven't, you know, responded, and then some of them actually, I don't know if they have responded. Brady, have you had any negative?
I have not.
Things come back?
No.
Okay. So I only have one property owner on the lake that has given me a hard no on it. The rest of the ones that haven't signed or haven't sent a letter in and supporting it, I've talked at length, sometimes over an hour with some of them, you know, and they've expressed concerns about, some people say, well, I kind of like it, like it is, you know, it kind of keeps people out, you know. You know, that's the way it's kind of always been, and, you know. I go on to, you know, discuss with them that, you know, I understand that, your concerns there, but, you know, it's not 16 of us anymore up here. There's 48 owners here now. And here's the other things that make it, you know, a benefit for you. And for the most part, I get a degree of support from those people. None of them would say absolutely we don't want it. And I encourage them, at the same time, follow up with a letter or an email or call to Brady, you know, to show that you are either supportive of it. And I understand if you're not, that's fine, then send in a letter of that effect. So, and then as transparent as I can. And for the most part, I have some good feelings about that nobody out there is, other than one person, is like totally against this deal. And then there's the ones that you don't get response to, and it's kind of like, does that mean they don't care? They're against it? They just, are they still around? I mean, I use the tax mailing labels for sending out the mailing, you know, and, you know, like I say, there's some that just haven't responded, you know, so it's hard to know. And I found out along the way that, you know, one letter would go out and go, and I would get, well, I got two back, like Brady said. And then I found addresses for them. One was, I went down to the end of the lake and visited with the kid, the son of the person that had the property initially. Find out, you know, the father, his dad's passed away. His mother's in the nursing home, he's 93. Now it's, you know, his brother that lives in, outstate anyways, New York. And he's got power of attorney. So then I forward the stuff back on to them. So it's kind of all a work in motion. And does that answer your questions? I just haven't had anybody that said totally I'm against it, except for one.
That's helpful. And I think clearly, you know, looking at the 48 parcels between emails and petitions and whatever, we have more than half of the people who have responded in a very positive way to this. So clearly, there is generalized support along that road for this.
Right.
Otter Powers.
Yeah, I think your plan, the timing, will work. There's two areas in the statute. So I believe the county board is not under the 30-day restriction. If it's caused by a petition, then that's the section where it's required that you must respond by 30 days. There is another 30-day period after the resolution it takes effect in 30 days. So there's lots of 30 days in there.
Yes, there are. You had to use multiple highlighters on this one to find all the pieces. Well, thank you. That's very helpful. I have had an opportunity to speak to the Highway Department. That was one of my big concerns about their capacity to manage this. And there were three of us that met for about an hour and a half, and they feel that they could manage this at this point in time. But one thing that all of the county board needs to do is look at down the road, how do we handle these? Because we've had a tremendous amount of growth in the county. And if suddenly there are numerous groups like this that come together, there may not be the capacity to handle and manage these. And so it's really important that we visit with our Highway Department and include them in all our discussions. Commissioner Hawkins, has anything been brought up at any of your meetings? I know you're on that Highway Department group and...
Yeah, actually, I brought it up at our last Highway Advisory Committee meeting. Robbie Pun shared, obviously, the same thing. No real concerns with this one, except maybe finding a contractor. That was the discussion, but... That was the discussion, but I do have a, a different question about process and what's happened previously. Otter Powers maybe can talk. I don't really have a problem with this. I see the benefit of this. My concern is just going with a simple majority of residents. I mean, we are taxing all of the properties and I would like to see a higher percentage of yes responses, maybe sixty or seventy-five percent, just makes it easier. I get you're not ever going to get a hundred.
So that's sixty-two point five percent right now over the landowners.
Right.
You know, thirty out of forty-eight.
Third, oh, I thought we were down to a...
We're thirty of forty-eight.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was the list I was looking at? Twenty-six.
Probably the property identification numbers.
Okay.
And some people own a couple parcels.
So, do you know in the past when these were approved, was there a precedent of this percentage of property owners?
There's never been any set precedent. Some of them existed before I got this position, but I, I think the smaller, the more compact, you know, those tend to go, you know, mostly unanimous. But when they get these broader areas where you have offshoots off of them, et cetera, yeah, it's a little more difficult than Stephen said, to contact people and get them, you know, to engage is, is a real challenge in some of these areas. And maybe having the resolution by September twenty-seventh gives an opportunity to at least, you know, get some, some more response from those few that are still out there. But, yeah, I guess that's all I have.
Okay. I just wondered if we had a issue. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess I, I was a little, and still am maybe a little confused. I, I don't fully understand the burden on the highway department. I was under the assumption that there would be some logistics as far as collecting dollars, but then I, I was under the assumption that it goes to then a contractor both for the improvements as well as, or the repairs rather, as well as the maintenance, or at least in the past. So I, I was unaware of burdens on the highway department. If you could help me understand that a little bit more, it would help me.
Just the administrative burden probably.
Right.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
So they're looking...
They actually go out and get bids and this type of thing for the service, the services provided, they're paid for from the highway department funding, reserve fund actually, and then it's, then that's assessed out in whatever fashion we decide based on the options that we have and the recommendation from the group, is my understanding.
Yeah, and forgive me for taking light that amount of work from the highway department.
Oh, yeah.
It is...
That was my, I left our meeting and drove over there because that was the one thing I wanted to make sure we weren't increasing burden and there is some, but they feel they can handle it.
Yes.
It's just looking at the future picture for the county.
I think it's been prime, the biggest issue's been the, the first one, the, the road has to be repaired, let's say, fixed up initially. That isn't, I don't think that's been in every single case, but a lot of them now are like that. They actually, they're analyzing, they're, they're engineering, figuring out what does it actually take so that they can get the bid for that, just like an architect service or something.
Absolutely.
And then they have to deal with the owners. That was one of the changes in twenty nineteen, requiring that you have a single representative because that was one of their challenges.
Yeah.
Is they get, and that's where they have to respond, they'll get multiple people saying what they think they need out there and speaking authoritatively and then they find out, oh, well, that's not coming from, you know, everyone. And so that's been the, another part of the challenge that hopefully is better now with a single representative, yes.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hawkins?
Um, yeah, I have one more question about the Cook County landing. Okay, that's, this is a county parcel that's part of this district. How, how does that handle as far as assessments then and the actual cost of this project?
It wouldn't be assessed.
So it's just taken out?
It's just taken out.
It's just, okay. The point of clarification.
That's an undeveloped public landing. It's, it's not used as a public landing, it was set, set aside as part of that original development as, as a parcel for a public, a future public landing if one was needed, but it's never been developed into one. So it's just vacant land there.
Other questions? Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good morning, everyone, and to Steve for all of your good work and everybody that worked with him. As you can see, our conversation is going more into depth about how we're going to think about this. We have several subordinate districts in Cook County. We'll probably have another one coming before us, before the end of the year, so we have a lot to put in place so that we can understand your situation, their situation, and our situation. I think the highway department will help us and guide us as to how they can help you and how they can help us for the future because we are getting more requests as time goes on with our particular roads. And so appreciate you coming before us and giving us a learning lesson too. And hopefully by into September, we will have some decisions made that will affect you and the future.
Absolutely. Well, is there support for having a committee of whole discussion about subordinate service districts? Just I think an opportunity to study, to visit with the highway department, not only for this particular case, but for the larger future picture? And then to bring forward a resolution at the following board meeting? Does that seem reasonable to everyone?
Yes, I think that's very reasonable. I would, I mean, just based on the sheer volume of support for this subordinate service district, I would lean more towards approving it before, but it doesn't make any sense to not have further discussion before we do that. But I think, I think it's been demonstrated broad support and kudos to your, your hard work trying to educate and, and communicate with everyone. I know that's not, not always possible, but I think that makes sense just so we can all get up to speed with that bigger picture and then getting the resolution in place, like you said, for the following meeting.
Commissioner Swalison?
Right, to formally land this issue, I make a motion to table this issue for this meeting, to take it up as a discussion item on the September Committee of the Whole meeting and to have a final vote on this item on the September twenty-seventh meeting.
Thank you so much. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling?
Further discussion, I just want to thank Commissioner Swalison for nailing those dates down. That's where I was stuck.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And thank you all for your hard work.
All right, thank you so much. Excellent work.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
We will be in touch. Thank you. All right, let's take a five-minute break. How about a seven-minute break, just to put it in an even time? All right, and then we'll continue.
Morning, Molly.
Good morning. Hey, you're getting a few signs. Is that? You're getting a few signs.
Hi.
Oh, yes.
Mike's, Mike's there still.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I know what I was driving from. Sue Higgs is a friend of mine.
Starting to come home.
Yeah, yeah. Sue Higgs is a friend of mine and she was distributing signs.
Thank you so much for all your work. We've done a very, very nice job. I know it is challenging, I heard it's, it's about the area that had all the issues and...
I just...
I think I think it's going to go very well.
Yes.
And I think we're one policy.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we're having very good places and...
Nice church, Byron.
Yes, we're, I'm on the bar. You guys get the patience award.
Hopefully I'm getting more support by word.
I should have worn mine too, but I think it's a no-no.
Probably not today.
I have one before, but I've had a sweater. You're discreet.
You gotta be careful of those logos.
And of course, we all have our North Shore Health, our WTIP here. That's our wardrobe thing.
We filled her up. Look at that.
Here. Oh, thanks.
We're not going to need it, so we don't want to lose that. It's an important piece of paper. It was so interesting. I talked to some other counties about these and they have no clue what our roads are like.
Oh, yeah.
It was, these were like little roads that went through farm fields and it's like, no, 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 that's not what this is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Robbie said that we're the only county that does SGSDs for roads. He says they're for...
Yep, they've had discussions of their places and... Other, yeah. But they also in other places don't have the cost because of the kind of terrain that we have. And so that is likely why.
Mm-hmm. Maybe Lake County.
I think of some of the little roads I've driven when I'm pheasant hunting that, you know, and it, they say they have signs on them and whatever, that they're rugged and, and I think, you don't know what a rugged road is.
Right, right. Yeah.
If I can drive my preaston, it is not rugged.
Right. Make it a little muddy, but...
I've only gotten stuck once and had to have a tow truck pull me out.
Actually, I was going to take my bike and ride this road on my bike just to get a sense of it, but then, well, there's just too much going on, I didn't get it done.
I was telling James I've been up there a number of times and luckily, the last time I was by myself because if my wife would have been in the car, we would not have kept going.
Yeah.
And actually while I was driving it, there was a tractor pulling just like a, some kind of grading, you know, implement. Wasn't, I don't think it was a legit grading thing, but they were, they were doing what they could, but they were mainly just kind of scraping large rocks, you know?
Wow.
Not, not really leveling.
Well, I've seen people take like a bed spring and tow behind their four-wheelers.
Yeah, yeah. It was something like that.
That was good.
Yeah, it was just, they didn't have the gravel. It was just like softball-sized rocks and they're moving those around. It's like, oh, that might fill some holes a little. And I, and I didn't completely, while I witnessed that, I didn't completely understand the situation. So I was like, who owns this road? Why are they doing this? Is this okay? Blah, blah, blah. And I was like, whatever, I'm working. Actually, I didn't, I didn't work it, I just went and scoped out a job and it was really unique. I hadn't seen properties like that, but the only way to access with materials was from water, but they did have a little like roped-off switchback kind of going down a cliff.
Oh, hmm.
It was really interesting.
Wow.
But, yeah, they built on the rock and then it all moved because it wasn't bedrock, it was just lake, lake bottom rock, you know, so a lot of muck.
I was just up in International Falls over the weekend. It was for ARC.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Our meeting was up there and then we, we camped up there for a couple nights just because I hadn't, it's been thirty years since I've been there.
Isn't it neat?
All the islands out there and the houses, the cabins on the islands, it's like, wow.
Yeah, it's like saying, but...
And actually Wade Pavlick, Commissioner Pavlick, saw pictures of their cabin. Anyway, who was brought over piece by piece in a john boat. And I'm like, how did you?
Wow.
It's like, that is dedication.
The process, I bet that took a while.
Hmm, yeah.
I really, I was really struck by that area though, just, just the geology of it reminded me so much of saying, but then like all the development, it's kind of like, oh, wow.
Yeah, it was like...
Where does this say?
High Falls.
International Falls, Rainy Lake.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was really, it was really fun.
Yep. I, I think it's probably going to boom at some point just because it's so remote and so beautiful and so...
Well, all right, well, our five minutes is up and we're going to return to our county board meeting at this time. We're on item seven and MIS and I see Rowan Watkins anxiously waiting to come forward. He's been waiting a long time. Good morning, Rowan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. Today we have a, a request on behalf of WTIP for an addendum to each of their three tower leases they have with the county. And it is for a continuation of the waiver of the rent that we do for our accounting purposes on the sites. It's an, required an addendum because it's a year early, but they, my understanding is that they need this information for grant purposes going forward. And the original reason for the waiver was related to public safety and community awareness. And I reached out to Sheriff Pat Eliasen as well as Emergency Management Director Mike Keport. When we did this the first time, those two positions signed a letter of support in favor of this, spelling out those reasons, and they wanted to express their continuation of that support for this. From the MIS tower management perspective, we're also in support of that, that works well for us. The, this would be, again, just a waiver for the next term, which actually starts, it's a five-year term, starting in October of twenty twenty-three. So like I said, in a year in advance, or they're asking for, to have this known and then be able to firm up their financials for the going forward. I don't know if, see, some representatives from WTIP are here, if they want to add anything or speak to that, otherwise I would just stand for questions.
Any questions or comments for Rowan or for WTIP? Commissioner Swalison?
I think you've answered the questions are at the Committee of the Whole. We were looking to, we discussed this and we were looking to hear from both the emergency services side of it and from MIS and to hear your support throughout. I think this firms that up for me personally that I think this is, this is a good way to do business to ensure that we have that outlet for the emergency services folks and public information when needed.
Absolutely. And I see that Mike Keport just walked in. Mike, is there anything you would like to add about the benefits for the emergency management with this tower lease addendum?
Um, no, I don't think so, but WTIP is such a major part of our community and it's an excellent way to get information out during emergency situations. So of course I support this, whatever we can do to help them, help us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. I just really appreciate all the, the further information in, in the packet. It really helped, helped give me a better perspective on things and, and really appreciate you answering the questions that we had from the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion for the addendum.
Madam Chair, I'll make the addendum for each tower lease waiving the rent for first renewal term and signatory authority to execute starting October of twenty twenty-three for the following five years.
Very well done. Is there support?
I can read.
Well, you, you ad-libbed a bit.
Yes, I support.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And thanks to WTIP for your support. Item number eight, land services. We have Neva Maxwell with us this morning. Welcome.
Morning. Busy morning for you all today. So we have before you a request for a conditional use permit for a one-unit bed and bedroom, submitted by Jamin Boy... submitted by Jamin Boyson. This would be off the Temperance Road. This was before the Planning Commission, on their August 10th Planning Commission meeting, there was no comment submitted by the public through the public hearing, comments period for this. The use is in the general commercial zone district, wherein bed and breakfast are listed conditional permit for that, and it was unanimously supported. There was, it was very fitting use for this location.
And I can state, just from being at that meeting, again, unanimous support, just seems to fit right in, and so I personally am very supportive of this. Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Neva, for bringing this to us. Could, Fan, do you know where a bed and breakfast is a permitted use?
I would need to go through the zoning ordinance and go through the different zoning districts. My guess would be, well, I'm not even going to guess. I would.
Good, yeah. Fair enough. It's safe for that.
Yeah, yeah, once they say I guess.
Let's just say many places.
Oh, wow, okay.
Many places.
Yeah, yeah, and I can look it up, too. I just, something that came to mind right now. I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for the conditional use permit for the one-unit bed and breakfast at 100 Temperance Road in Schroeder.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley.
No, I would also like to make a comment. I drove by it the other day. It's very secluded. There's hardly any neighbors, so it's just kind of tucked back in the woods and, you know, just kind of a neat little place.
Absolutely. All right, so we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Neva.
Thank you, Neva.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
You too.
You too, as well. And Auditor Powers, we have a number of items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is Title III funding that we received this year for 2021, and these funds, we have to put out a notice publication for 45 days before they can be used. So this request is substantially like most of the others that have come before you. The only difference in most of them is the amount that we allocate towards search and rescue out in the forest, because there's two basic uses for Title III funds, and that's the firewise program and then search and rescue in the forest. So, the sheriff has recommended setting aside 5,000 for search and rescue, and they occur there, and then the rest we would use for our firewise coordinator.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I should know this by now, but Brady, can you give us a little overview of Title I, II, and III? I know, I know in the analysis of the next item, it's, but just where do these come from? What is the background there?
It's, it's under a law called Secure Rural Schools, and prior to that, we used to get what was called the 25% payment, and that had to do with how much actual money-producing work was done out in the national forest, whether it was logging, mining, et cetera, and for leases, et cetera, and the county would get 25% of that. And those went down, those funds went down, not just here, but all over the country greatly, and so it was lobbied mostly by western states, this Secure Rural Schools, because it would provide set amounts rather than based on what actually happens out in the forest. So, so that was approved, and it's, it's a year-by-year approval. Sometimes they approve two years, sometimes they approve one, sometimes they wait a year and then approve two years in a row. So, it's kind of, you'll hear it not in a consistent manner when they get approved. But, so this has been in effect now for a number of years, the Secure Rural Schools. So, there's options, Titles I, II, and III. Title I is split 50/50, half of it going to the school and half of it to the highway department, and the option there is 85 or 80%. And I show you the, how the different options break down in the next, but, so that's basically Title I. Title II is something called Resource Advisory Commission, so it's the Forest Service working with representatives of the northeast counties up here. We don't generally see what they do, but they can propose projects out there as a group under the recommendation with the Forest Service. And then Title III is, again, funds that come to us, and that's where we can use it for firewise or search and rescue. I'm shortening it. It's actually, it's a long paragraph, but, yeah.
Thank you, and I'm sure that's helpful for the public, too. And I'm really curious about the Title II. I haven't heard a whole lot about that. I have not participated in the Regional Advisory Committee. Don't know if any of us, if it's another.
This is a question I had.
Yeah, yeah. It sounds like an opportunity to me.
It says commissioners are involved, and it's like, I wonder which one of us is.
No, not it.
I, representatives don't, don't have to be a commissioner. I recall Howard Hedstrom was our agent or whatever for Cook County at one time. I don't know who is currently. I don't get a regular, I don't get a report on that.
So that's something we could reach out to the Forest Service for, or what would be?
The Forest, yeah, I would expect the Forest Service is going to be the best contact for that.
So I'll contact Michael Kertow and see what that is. Thank you.
And particularly, what I was curious about is any restrictions on those Title II funds, what we could or could not use it for, and how we could lobby to, say, work towards housing or childcare.
Oh, it's more trail work, I think.
Is it?
That's what I, when I read up on it.
The Title II?
It's trail work, plantation projects, things of that nature, forest-related.
It might be environmental.
Well, so then I'll ask her. Okay. I'll ask, I'll ask John Benson as well, just to see if he's in trail.
Yeah, he might.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Swalison.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the notice for publication for the allocation and use of the 2021 Secure Rural Schools Title III funds.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the next item is the, the larger law itself, the Secure Rural Schools. So every five years, you have to, let's say, reapprove your allocation, and so they require that again. We have to give our approval to the state, actually, the governor's office, who then sends it in for all the counties. And this is where you decide the exact percentages that you would like to get. There's very little option in that.
Yeah.
You can see in the example that I gave, hopefully it's there. Yes, no, not very well. Okay. So, you have the option of 80 or 85% for Title I. Title II for the Resource Advisory Commission can be anywhere from 8, 13, or 20%, depending on what value you think that provides, and then Title III could be 0 or 7%. The option we have been under since this started gave us the largest amount for local funding, which is option two, 85% to our school and highway department, and 7% for Title III, which is the firewise, search, and rescue, leaving the Resource Advisory Commission with the 8% left. So, that's the, if you knew more about the Resource Advisory Commission, you may choose a different, a different option. We have to get this in this year to the state, which has to get it to the federal government before September 30th, so I think this is the last meeting to make that decision.
Absolutely. Other questions for Brady? Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, one other one as far as the history is concerned. When did that switchover happen from the?
From the 25%?
The 25% of the.
If I could get into my files, I could tell you, but I'm going to say in the 10-year, maybe longer than that.
Okay.
But when you were.
I'm going to say, yeah, since I've been auditor. And then it went, it went back briefly, didn't get approved. This was sometime after the, the economic crash, when a lot of things happened, sequestration of the BWCA funds and a lot of moving parts, and I think this got dropped at least for a year, and then it came back again.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that history. So is there a motion? Commissioner Mills.
Madam Chair, I'll approve my motion to allocate Secure Rural Fund, Secure Rural School federal payments using the 85, 8, and 7%.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
I will support.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're on to our RED5 LLC tax abatement development agreement.
Madam Chair, so we've been working on this for many months. We started with our policy last summer. It was actually the first step. We knew this was potential, and then we've had more than one public hearing regarding it, and Rob Dieter is here for RED5 LLC as the only, of the two applicants. He was the one that got funding from the Minnesota Housing Finance Authority, which both applicants said was key to their being able to go forward with a tax abatement to develop partial housing and partial retail. And so we've, we've had many talks and discussions with Rob. He came up with a development agreement a couple of months ago, and it went back and forth between our attorney and his attorney, and then Rob, James, Jason, and I met and hammered out some changes in that policy, and that's what's before you today, and that's where it sits at this, at this moment. So, I, I think I'll just leave it at that for now.
Okay. Any questions for Brady? Any discussion? Commissioner Mills.
Thank you for working on this. Thank you for working on this. Jason, thank you. James, Molly.
Takes a village.
Yes, thank you very much. It has been a long process, and I just really appreciate everyone's intentions and, and hard work as well, and it's a, it's a really good step towards getting some housing developed in Cook County, not to mention the business side of things, too. Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hawkins.
Yeah, I guess I just want to thank everybody, too. I was really worried about how this was going to look, and I'm just very impressed with this agreement, and it, I think it addresses all of the concerns that have been raised since the beginning of this process, and I just think, want to appreciate all the work that went into it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Commissioner Swalison.
Mr. Dieter. Thank you for your patience in working with the county on this. I recognize being the first is hard. And so I do, I want to just call that out because it is not easy, and it needs to be done, and I appreciate all the hard work by everybody involved, clearly I do, and as, you know, other commissioners have said, this is important for us to get it stabilized, get it set up, and get agreement throughout the board so we can move forward, but I recognize for you personally, it's been a lot of work, and thank you for your patience in working with us on it.
Thank, thank you, Commissioners Swalson and, and board, and that, I think Commissioner Sullivan said it best, it is, it is a village impact, and Administrator Yorki and Auditor Powers, Mary Somnus, Jason in the back was a catalyst to finding that, the language that balanced a lot of different interests, and Beth Draw is so grateful. And just the one, one note is, you know, the, the board's willingness to examine this is so timely, because the increase in interest rates has made the cost of debt 50% more expensive than what it was even just four or five months ago. So, the effort you're putting forward and the county's putting forward, I am grateful for, I respect, and I want to make sure that I'm a good steward of that, that investment.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Starley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm looking forward to the development of that bare land that I drive by all the time. Appreciate your efforts, too, and all of us working together. This has been a learning curve, for sure, but we're on the right road.
Great.
Other comments? Commissioner Swalson.
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the tax abatement development agreement with RED5 LLC, with approval being contingent upon the payment of the legal and financial consultation fees incurred as of the state.
Thank you so much. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onward.
Onward indeed.
All right, thank you so much. And Auditor Powers has one more item for us this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the Cook County Historical Society is continuing their quest for state appropriations to improve the buildings that they own and some that they manage that we own, and then also to build a new storage facility that doesn't have the wetland challenges of being on Lake Superior in the fall when the waves come in. And so the, the total that they are requesting from the legislature is just over 2 million, 2,185,300 of appropriations, and what they're asking from us today is for the board to write a letter of support for their request for those appropriations.
I know this is certainly an appropriate move, something they had hoped would have happened earlier, and now they're poised and in a situation where they hope in the next legislative session for this to occur. And having carried some of those wet documents out of the basement, I totally understand the need for archival storage and the importance of that, so I'm really glad that this is coming forward, and, and I think a letter of support is in order. There is no impact on the levy or anything like that. This is strictly a letter of support for our historical society. Further discussion? Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. Well, being that I serve on Historical Society Board myself, I understand all the nuances of how you support things, and this is really a good and bold part for them to go to the legislature, it's just they're not in session, so now we have to wait, and that's too bad, you know, because they want to move ahead, but hopefully, when the legislators all get renewed and new ones and so forth, when they get back to work, that this will be one of the priorities, and good for them to put this proposal together.
And it will require a lot of education, because there will be many new people. If you recall, Senator Bach and Representative Eklund in the past have supported this, and so there will be a lot of new players at the table potentially, and so a lot of education, that's for sure. Commissioner Mills.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to provide a lot of support for the Cook County Historical Society's request of 2.185,300 state legislative appropriations and for all that. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Let's see.
That doesn't work.
Talk about style here. So we do have a motion from Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Madam Chair, I support if he's done.
So we have a motion and support. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that letter of support? Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you so much, Auditor Powers.
Thank you.
Administrator Yorki.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So this morning, we have in the House, Mr. Jason Hale with the Cook County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. The HRA has developed its budget proposal for FY '23, and, and Jason and the Chair of the HRA Board, Mary Somnus. And Jason and the Chair of the HRA Board, Mary Somnus, are both here to share some information about that request.
Good morning to both of you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. As you know, this is truly delightful. The HRA Board has prepared the levy request for the next year. The materials were all included in your packet. We're prepared to walk through the presentation if you'd like, or we can just simply answer questions if you've already had a chance to look it over. We don't need to read to you if you've been able to do that already.
I would think for the benefit of the public, it might be nice to go through the slides.
Do you want to? Okay, well, very good then. Jason would love to do that.
I would love to.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Well, as Chair Somnus said, we're delighted to be here today. It's, you know, I am just one cog in the machine that has gotten us to this point. And I'm very delighted to be that cog. And hopefully, this is just setting the path for next year, which is the first of many successful years of achieving these goals we have in the county for making housing more attainable and accessible for folks. So I'm just going to, oh, thank you. Just to do a review, I thought it'd be helpful to kind of set the groundwork. This is the budget that was established prior to me coming here. It was $125,000. And if you, just to look at the column on the right, if folks have the packet, you have it in your packets before you correct, okay. The 2022 on the right, the far column, is the actual expenditures. So obviously, starting, you know, my position in this, starting in April 25th of this year, wasn't the full year allotment. So with that, if you go to the very bottom, there's an expected rollover of approximately $18,000 from the savings from, you know, the year not being fully worked through, which is useful because we have a lot of things we can use those funds for. But if there are any questions about this, I'm happy to address it. But this is generally the expenses that the HRA has incurred so far. Pretty root things, especially when considering we're establishing basically a small business as far as office supplies and all of the technology and such. Oh, go ahead, Chair.
I just would add, this is a projection. You know, the rollover might not be that exact amount at the end of the year, but it's our best guess at this time.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Based on what we've experienced so far, that's our best guess. And it'll fluctuate a little bit, I'm sure, if things come up. But the amounts, just a quick note, the amounts, the $7,500 for council and financial consultation, the HRA Board had approved those amounts recently. So we're leaving those as placeholders in the event that we need to access those resources before the end of the year, which I'm hopeful and anticipate we will. Then that means projects are happening. You can go to the next if you don't mind. One key thing to note here is that, as the board is familiar, last year and for several years prior to that, in fact, the $100,000, there was a $100,000 allotment to the EDA for housing purposes. The Chair and I had met with and I've spoken with board members and the EDA Director about transitioning that over from the EDA to the HRA. Obviously, it's a more appropriate place, given that the funds are dedicated by you folks for the purposes of housing, and they agree, and they think that's a sensible thing to do. So I just want to make it clear for the public's benefit that this is not an increase in the levy that we're proposing. It's just a transfer from one entity to the other. So those $100,000 are, and we'll go to the next slide in a second. Those are proposed to be transferred from the EDA to the HRA explicitly to continue the work on housing development. So just want to make sure that that's clear because folks are going to see different levy numbers, and we're not proposing any sort of increase. Go to the next one, please. These are the litany of things that we propose to use those $100,000 for. One thing, I mean, we can read through this, but the one thing that I wanted to capture here is that one of the unique roles that an HRA and local government can play is setting the table to help development occur. If you talk to any developer who's done work in Cook County or anywhere for that matter, they'll tell you that those are the costs and those are the tricks to getting, to making it worthwhile for them to want to develop something. So, in other words, things like financial consultation or legal advice about what we can or cannot do or pre-development costs, like establishing, you know, boundaries for a site. Or there's a whole list of things. Those are necessary to set the stage that we can actually attract the development we need. Without those happening, there's a whole big question about who pays for that? The developer doesn't want to. You might not even be able to get them interested unless you are able to set that stage. And it seems clear to me that the HRA Board exists, my role exists, the community is supportive of housing because we haven't been able to meet those needs. So I want to make sure it's clear that the proposal here is to use those $100,000 in part, and the last slide will show, but in part to be able to secure those services to set that stage for development. The lion's share of the $100,000 transfer is proposed to be used for hard costs, so development explicit costs. So this isn't an increase in the levy. Again, it isn't an increase in the levy, period. And it isn't an increase to the HRA budget specifically for any more administrative costs or anything. It's explicitly to help facilitate more projects in the future. So if you want to go to, I believe, the last slide. And you can see that here, I've broken it down in the left column, year under year, just an allotment. Again, as Chair Somnus had said, this is a projection. You know, plans meet reality and they change. But this is, you know, based on previous experience and on the way things are going, I suspect there will be changing these numbers. But we want to put something out on paper to give a ballpark of what we're thinking. At the end of the day, again, the total 23 costs equal the requested amount from the county and the rollover funds. And there are some, there's a contingency in the bottom for that reason. They'll leave a little bit of cushion and leeway. And then there's also that contingency to help backstop some other costs if we have extraordinary legal costs for some reason or we have other costs that exceeds what we anticipate. So that's the overview. We're not proposing any increase in the budget or the levy request. We're just laying out what we think is going to be needed next year. And frankly, if we have more costs for development challenges and we have more projects, that's a good problem to have. We'll cross that if we get to it, but I'm hopeful that we run into it because it means things are underway. So with that, we'd be happy to address any questions the board may have.
And if I can, just before you begin your questions, I would add one more thing. And that is, we witnessed in our history with the $100,000, that was allocated to the EDA for housing. With those funds, we were able to partner with One Roof Community Housing and build 26 units of housing in Cook County. And for our $100,000 a year for two or three years, I don't remember how many years it took to do all that work anymore. But for that investment, One Roof came to Cook County and built over $5 million worth of housing. That's a way good return on investment with housing as the bonus. So just to remember that, it's a great investment. Investment of those small amounts of money in the things that Jason was describing, that shows the developer that we really want them here and that we're willing to work hard to make it happen because they need the local partnership in order to work in Cook County. They're not, they don't know the county. They don't know the people. They don't know a lot about how things work here, you know. So it's a, it's a great, it's a great investment and a great signal that we're totally committed to solving this problem.
I had one more thing, just because the Chair triggered my memory here. And I will keep it very brief because I could talk housing all day long. It is clear to me that the reason we don't in part have the housing that we need and the reason that there's such a shortage, there's a lot of, there are a lot of variables and factors playing to that. But I think it's clear that we need to change the game somehow. And this community has shown the commitment to trying to step up and figure out what that looks like. So I just wanted to say thank you for getting us to this place that the HRA has established, that I'm here to help and do my best to help support this mission. And this is just evidence of, we have to figure out how to be that creative partner because the private market's not going to do it by itself. If it had, it would have done it a while ago. And frankly, we're competing with the entire country. So we're competing for finances, for resources, for builders. Not to mention, we're competing, we're at the end of the line here, geographically speaking. So we have to, aside from our charm and the beautiful place we live in, which are wonderful assets, we have to figure out how else we can show up and commit, get people, committed people, the right people to want to build here and invest here with us. So this is just one way that the HRA can show, hey, we mean business, and this is what we have, and we're willing to build what we have. And it isn't everything, and it isn't a lot, but it's what we have, and what else can we do? So I just want to say thank you. And again, take any questions if you have them.
And I would just like to thank Jason, you, and Mary for your leadership. And I think both Commissioner Hawkins and I, having sat at many of those HRA meetings, are very impressed with the board and how supportive and creative and just the great dialogue that has occurred. And so we feel so fortunate to have all of you helping us solve this housing crisis. So thank you.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, we heard a public comment today just about the dire circumstances that we all are aware of with housing. And I appreciate that comment this morning. And so I guess I'd ask, is this enough? And I mean, and I mean that seriously, too. It is funny. I try to be funny.
But you are. You're successful.
I truly wonder, is this enough? We started with this not having, we started with this $100,000 towards housing, not having an HRA. And Mary, in your role as the EDA Director, leaps and bounds from what we had been doing before that. So thank you for your work there. But now that we have the HRA developed, maybe now is not the time for more. But I'm anticipating that at some point, if we really want to take a big bite out of this problem, we're going to have to lay down more investment. And to see a return like that, I think speaks volumes. Is now the time or am I asking too much in this budget season?
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes, well, thank you for that because I do think this is a very slim budget. And I do think housing is our number one problem. All the other things, now, we just sat with you in another meeting, and you proposed many hundreds of thousands of dollars for another problem.
Yeah.
But I think this is the issue in Cook County that needs to be addressed first. Other things are important. But we can't solve the other problems long term until we do this. We know that. So yes, would I like to see this number maybe higher to give them some more latitude? I'm okay with this for now. I want to save that fund balance because there might be something that comes up this next year. That's what I would prefer to save the fund balance for right now because we have the money. We know this is, could be a big issue. So, thank you. But we don't have a whole lot of money to spread out too far. So, but thank you for recognizing this is a very slim budget.
Commissioners Vallsen?
Well, and I appreciate your passion for it, Commissioner Mills. I think this is a great budget to get the HRA moving forward with a known value. And I would prefer that as things come up, just as we did with tax abatement and other things, I want that reasoned and that thoughtful approach to come forward. And I am confident that with the board that we have and the leadership that we have, they will do that. And they'll bring forward their needs. And it will be structured based on this is what it's going to take for us to break through. If this isn't the number, and it may not be, I wouldn't be surprised that they're going to need more help. But I want that to be very, very thought through, been challenged, and then brought to the board. I don't want to throw something at it. I want to have that thoughtful approach that I know the structure we've put into this and the leadership we have is going to provide. That's where I stand on that.
Other comments?
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate those comments. I think we're all on similar pages here. I guess the reason I asked is to push it. You know, we need to be talking about this. I'm not saying we need to give more money now, but I want to make sure that we're thinking ahead. Because for too long, not a whole lot was done. And it's really catching up right now. And it has, it has been catching up. It's been a long, it's been a long time. But has that, was that discussed at the HRA Board? About what investment will get us? What more could get us? What less would get us?
Commissioner Mills, well, first of all, thank you, Commissioners, for your comments, taking them to heart. Yes, it was discussed. So from my perspective, is it enough? It's never enough. Right, there's, there are always more opportunities. With more funding, you could do more things. Having said that, I feel comfortable personally with where this is at and doing what I can to leverage other funds with these funds. And to Commissioner Vallsen, sorry, I had some trouble with that one. I'm not Norwegian or Scandinavian at all, so sometimes it's difficult. Sauna, I had that one, by the way. I was corrected. Thank you, yeah.
You're good.
Am I good? If that's all I needed, great. I just want to thank you for your comment and acknowledge it because this board is going to see myself and the HRA before you later this, I'm hopeful, either later this year or early next year, with specific project requests, maybe in the form of tax abatement, maybe in the form of tax increment financing, maybe in property. We don't know yet. But I'm working on all of those things. So we will be coming to you with specific asks that don't, that take various forms, but that are project-specific because the need is there. I feel confident that this is a great start. You know, to the extent that the HRA grows and we're able to actually deliver the things that we need in this community, great, let's have that conversation. For now, I just feel compelled to make the best with what we have and to show that it's worthwhile investment, to show the leverage we can have and access with the funds that the county is providing. And then we'll see where that takes us. But yes, more funds are always helpful, of course. Anybody would be lying to say no. But I also want to respect the community's initial investment in this and say thank you for that and the trust with that. And then show what we can do with it and see what comes next.
And I do feel that this is an opportunity for the HRA to show our community what they can do, that the results that we begin to see are going to drive potentially further funds coming to the HRA. So I appreciate your judicious look at funding and your appreciation for it and also the fact that you're really caring for those taxpayer dollars. You're being very thoughtful about those decisions that you're making. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I would, I would, excuse me, I would say that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it.
Take your time.
She's overcome.
Mr. Mills choked her up.
If I may, Madam Chair, thank you. I just wanted to, I agree with what everyone's saying. My frustration is that when we assigned $100,000 for the EDA to do housing, when we assigned money to invest in the One Roof projects, those projects were supposed to demonstrate our ability to get something done. We have done that. We have demonstrated. Granted, this is a new entity, a new board. I would argue that it's a much more capable because it's focused on housing. And I think we've already demonstrated, I trust your leadership and what you need and what you ask for, but I'm just chomping at the bit here. And granted, I'm not the one doing the work, so forgive me, staff that are strained by this, you know, this push. But we've shown what can happen. It's just, let's keep doing it. Let's do more. That's what's really needed. And we hear that every single day that we're out and about. So that's all. But thank you. I accept, I accept the budget as proposed, but I still want to push.
Mary, is there anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I'm not, no, thanks. For everyone's benefit, seasonal allergies, not COVID. I would, thank you, Commissioner Mills. I know that many people in Cook County have the passion in our hearts to get it done. Like, I wish we were pounding nails today, you know, but it's coming as fast and furious as it possibly can. One thing that I would ask is, as Jason mentioned, you know, we may be coming back later in the year with requests for TIF or tax abatement or sell a piece of property for a dollar, you know, whatever kind of needs reveal themselves to us. But I would ask if there is a possibility that we discover that investment of county funds that aren't in the levy? Is there, is there a source anywhere in the county buckets that if something happens later? buckets that if something happens later in the year and Jason said, wow, if we could get another 100,000, we could do this, you know, is that an opportunity to look at as things progress, as we learn more? I don't know if there is any such a thing.
Well, I would just note that we did, just recently, the board did agree to allocate the $586,000 of our American Rescue Plan funding for, to, to the HRA. So, there is, in fact, a pool of funding. Yeah. So, so there...
I'm sorry, I thought we didn't, I didn't remember. Yeah.
That's, that's okay.
Thank you, James.
Well, no worries. So, so that money's available.
And that's for infrastructure purposes, right?
Well, it originally was for infrastructure, but there's now more flexibility based on the April 1st, 2022 guidance from the Treasury Department. So, so there is some funding that has a fair degree of flexibility we can use for those kinds of expenses. So...
That's right. That's huge.
But I, I would agree, too. I mean, I, we, we completed or we approved the abatement policy because we anticipated that there would be projects coming forward. And so, there are other tools that we can use if we need to. But I feel like in the, in the short term, we're probably pretty well armed to take the next steps.
Great. Well, we, we really appreciate the support of the community. And, you know, we, we know that neither one of us would be here if it wasn't for the support of the, the community, the board, all of us in the village, working together. It's exciting to be a part of creating the solution.
Thank you so much for your presentation today. And I know for the public, it's very, very helpful to be able to see the numbers, to hear the story, and to hear this conversation. So, thank you very much.
Our pleasure. Any other questions from the board?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great rest of the day.
You, too.
And just as a reminder for the public, the HRA's budget request will be in the preliminary budget that the board will be asked to approve on September 13th. So, it'll all be, all be wrapped together.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, folks. So, just other, a couple other sort of big picture items that I want to bring to your attention. We did have our capital improvement plan consultant, CRBPS, in town a couple of weeks ago to do building walkthroughs. We went up to the airport, the community center, we did the town halls, and the highway garage up in Hovland and down in Tofti, the two highway garages in, in Hovland, and the one in Tofti. And so, and those were buildings that we didn't have, well, we did have plans for the, for the new Hovland garage. But the other ones, we didn't have good plans for. And so, what, what our consultants did was they did walkthroughs with 3D camera where they can take like a room picture. And they're using that information. They also reviewed like all the mechanical systems, checked out how old the furnaces, water heaters, et cetera, are. And they're putting that all together to create 3D models of, of those buildings. And then we'll have also 3D models of the courthouse, the law enforcement center, the highway campus. And that'll form a basis for the, the data that we're going to assess to determine where we are and what the needs are. And we, we know from the walkthrough that, that you all did a year ago, that, I mean, we have a lot of the needs, right? There's been a history of underinvestment in our buildings. And so, this, this work is bringing that all into focus. And the, the other thing for folks who are listening to know is that we've also included in the consultant's scope of work, some public engagement sessions so that the public can look at the same information that we're looking at and can, can consider the data that, that we're going to be reviewing to provide input on what they think the priorities should be. I, you know, I could sit in my office and try to make decisions about where dollars should go. You guys could do that up here on the dais, but I really think we need a community dialogue. I think that's kind of the way things work best around here. I know there are a lot of opinions. I know there's a lot of interest in how the county spends money on facilities. It is one of the biggest areas of expenditure. And so, that information needs to be out in the open. It needs to be available for people to look at. And so, that's going to be something that, that we're going to focus on this fall. So, the next steps are, the consultant will be coming back to, to review the remaining buildings, synthesizing that data. And I'm anticipating sometime in around October or November, we're going to be scheduling a public meeting or two, kind of like an open house forum where people can come to the commissioner's room or maybe at the community center and look at the information that we put together and provide feedback on a direction for this capital improvement plan. Those, those are kind of the next big steps. The goal is still to have the CIP completed by the end of the year. And our consultant feels confident that we can meet that deadline. So, are there any questions on that?
No, I just think it's going to be a great tool as we move forward in being able to assess whether it's for the budgeting, as we've discussed here, you know, to be able to lay those pieces in. I will warn you ahead of time as you do that, initially, it's kind of startling, and that's why the prioritization is so important.
For sure.
Because you see, the needs always are more than what is, you know, thought to be there. So, you, you do have to do some, some work to do that prioritization. But once you have it set out, that's just so helpful to be able to, you know, year after year, look out there and know what you have coming or have a very good idea. And as things change, and they will, something will break down you didn't anticipate or something, even though you had your best efforts, you'll just have to adjust then and, you know, reprioritize. But also gives you a good sense of what you're spending now on what you have based, you know, and then as a basis for needs going forward for other capital needs or, or building improvements, expansions, anything else.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Yorki, for, for that update. And I just want to add, you know, the building, the building committee got, got a chance to meet with the, the project lead there and, and heard the presentation. And everyone is very impressed with the scope and just how thorough and thoughtful and comprehensive the, the, the scope of work is. And it's, we're going to be in an incredible place to, to be able to prioritize and address these. It's, it's really impressive, and I'm very, very excited to, to get on that path. I guess we're already on that path, but I'm excited to get further along with that.
Yep, for sure.
The value's in those details.
Yes.
Indeed. So, another, a couple other sort of big picture items, we, the consultant that we have working on our compensation study, David Drown Associates, is moving forward with collecting data on salary data from the comparable counties that we selected, that you all approved at the last business meeting. And so, that work is underway. And I'm hopeful, and I know that our next business meeting, September 13th, the preliminary budget and levy will be on that. So, I'm not sure how many, how many other things we want to put on that agenda. But I'm hoping to provide at least a cursory, if not a more detailed, update on the status of that work. We should have some information by then. And then the, the last thing I wanted to mention today is that I've convened a team of folks internally from the auditor's office, Highway Department, Public Health and Human Services, and the assessor's office to review, oh, and Human Resources, to review our financial and HR software. We rely on a number of systems to do payroll, to track employee data, to manage our finances. And these systems all have to work together. And they do so with varying degrees of effectiveness. And in some cases, they could be a lot more effective, I think. The problem is, when you start talking about upgrading systems, it is, it's like a stack of Django blocks, you know? You pull one thing out and it changes the whole structure. And so, you have to approach these things with a great degree of caution. And so, we've started having a very preliminary, very thoughtful, deliberate, slow conversation about all the systems that we have, how they talk to each other, how they don't talk to each other, what the, what the pros of each are, what the cons are. You know, I'm, I'm not here to say that we're in dire need of replacing everything tomorrow. We're not. But we have been using some of these systems for a long time. And there is a concern that, you know, if we don't start thinking about these issues now, we could end up in a spot where we're having to make decisions kind of under duress. And we don't want to do that. So, so MIS, our IT department, is doing some follow-up based on the conversation that we had at our first meeting a couple of weeks ago to gather additional information from some of our peer counties who have started migrating to other systems, to learn about their experience, what worked for them, what, what didn't work. I know anecdotally, I've heard from other administrators who have alluded to, you know, getting a new system that they thought was going to be all that and then really struggling in the implementation. And, and I think invariably, when you're, when you're doing this kind of system improvement, you're going to run into problems. And there's, there's just no way to avoid that. But we're hoping to learn from the, from the experience of our peers so that if and when we do move forward on making changes, that we do so in a way that really minimizes problems. So, that's, I just wanted you to be aware of that because, and that's going to be a fairly lengthy process, I anticipate. But I will be giving you updates as we move forward in that discussion, share some information that we've gotten from other counties so that when I, when I come before you someday with a request to replace Kronos or, you know, do, do whatever step we, we think we need to take, that it's not a surprise and that there's a lot of data to consider in, in making that change. So, that's what I got.
Thank you so much. Questions? Commissioner Svaloson?
Yeah, when you, as soon as you started talking about that, right after the capital improvement plan, it just reminded me of my own past experiences with, that is an area that's often left out of capital improvement plans are all of those systems and things that periodically have to be at least updated or changed out. So, it's a great, a great follow-on, whether you intended it or not, because it's, that's the perfect way to look at those, all the way down through, you know, your other things like radios and all the other, you know, those things you don't, you use every day but don't think about. And so, yeah, I applaud the fact that you're having the discussion. It's one you need to continually have. Yes, I've experienced some bad experiences of trying to change things over and been sold something that was going to fix all my problems and created more than I ever fixed. So, I'll just tell you that slow, thoughtful, and experience from others is without question the way to go. Know what you're going to get and have a very detailed discussion or review before you step off.
Yep. I have had that same experience in previous positions where, you know, the sales pitch always sounds great.
Sure does.
And then you actually get the product and you're trying to work with it, and it's like, well, what about this? Why doesn't it have this functionality? You know, lots of, lots of problems. So, doing your homework upfront, it's not a guarantee to, that you'll avoid all problems, but it'll certainly help implement more effectively.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, and I want to just thank you for making sure staff in these departments are included. They're the ones actually using.
For sure.
This system. And it is much more helpful to make sure you're getting a good system if you can make sure they have input on what they like or don't like about what they're currently doing and solving that problem and not just going with the sales pitch. So, thank you for engaging staff on this.
That's, that's the only way to do it. Because the folks who are using the software every day are the ones who know it best. They know the, you know, the good qualities, they know the bugs, and I wouldn't think of doing it any other way. We need their, their involvement.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I, I agree with all that's been said again. And as far as asking peer counties, I guess I would also ask that you ask more broadly with just AMC. It sounds like a lot of the integration and communication happens with state systems. And, and all of the 87 counties are going to be integrating with that. Yeah, I think that's something AMC should be more a part of. What I was also going to say is, from past conversations we've had and past mistakes we've made, that there is not a perfect system. And I would propose that there could be. I, my background is in computer science. I truly believe that you can talk amongst systems. It's just lining all that up. So, taking a statewide inventory of different systems, this is where AMC comes in, right? Taking a statewide inventory of the different systems, what, what language they use, how they communicate, and then building a system that can do that, I don't think is too tall of an order. It's certainly outside the realm of counties' roles and responsibilities, but as you say, down the road, we could be in a very difficult situation. So, I think it makes a lot of sense to push this idea to more of a statewide solution, possibly getting the state involved, although I know that gets very messy. And there's been plenty of failures there with, with some state electronic systems. But, but it's just really important to be able to talk about the needs and, and the potential there because there's a lot of money that's wasted when we're doing all these, trying to figure out how everything fits together or doesn't and redundancies. And it's, it's pretty ridiculous. And it's not magic, it's just programming. So, and maybe that's beyond your scope, too, James. As far as, you know, you're asking peer counties, that's, that's awesome, but, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to maximize, right?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that a lot. So, just to give you a little more detail, the, the initial inquiries we're making are based on information that Rowan was able to get from a database showing what systems different counties are using. So, so we're looking at counties that are like us in using certain systems and maybe either have, have currently the same mix or, or maybe have switched out an element of, of their, their software so that we can, again, try to find examples that are most like our own. The other thing I was going to mention is, I think I heard you offering to build us a new system.
For the low, low price of...
In your spare time, right?
Well, I'll cer, I'll certainly be asking more questions, not of you necessarily, just more broadly, I guess, with AMC and just what is going on? Why is this so impossible and difficult and ridiculous? And why can't we coordinate something? But that'll be a tangent and aside, and maybe you'll never hear from me again.
I kind of doubt that. That's what I have.
Well, thank you so much for all those updates.
Thank you.
All right. Any Commissioner concerns or reports on meetings? Any updates? Commissioner Hawkins?
Well, I guess, speaking about our comp study, when I was at ARC last Friday, I happened to have a chat with Rick Gudermont from Lake County. They are also doing a comp study. And so, we were chatting about that and comparisons. But he was under the impression that Lake County is not looking just at salary, but also benefits. So, I just wanted to share because I thought that was odd. And he thought, well, he assumed it was just standard that you would look at.
Do you, do you know who they're using?
He said a name that started with an F and I didn't write it down, so I don't remember.
No worries. No worries.
But, yeah, he said a name and it wasn't the one we used.
Okay.
But anyway, I just thought I would share that because I do think that we talked about the differences there. And they are using similar-sized counties.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. They're using similar population?
Well, that's what, I need to get more detail. Population and budget size, that's where they're going, is what I understood.
And thank, thank, thank you for sharing that, Madam Chair. If I may, I was going to ask, did we get any feedback regarding comparing benefits from DDA or hasn't, we haven't been able to?
No, no. No, haven't.
Commissioner Mills?
Uh, if I may, I'd like to just ask about the correspondence as far as the Grandary Art Colony was concerned. I, that wasn't, it wasn't clear to me what that was saying as far as evaluating options for 2023. That's as far as the art fair was concerned. Have we, yeah?
So, yeah, I, we hadn't received a formal request from the art colony for funding, which has been the case in past years. which has been the case in past years. I'm scheduled to meet with Lila Brown at 1:00 today to talk about that.
Thank you.
Other questions or updates?
I just wanted to share the Council on Aging has continued to bolster their financial position by some additional donations and grants. They recently got $5,000 from the North Shore Health Foundation, so that was exciting. And then they have something, you know, usually we talk about meals that they're serving and clients that they're serving. But this is something they're doing in a unique way. It's a, yes, lesser utilitarian note, I guess. But they are going to have a mural painted on their garage. And that is the garage that's used by Arrowhead Transit. And they have their quilters group designing a quilt pattern that will then be transferred onto the wall. And in addition to people that are there working as quilters at the Council on Aging, it'll be intergenerational. They're going to have kids from ISD 166, both the middle school and the high school participating. So it's just a really nice community mural that will add to all the murals that currently we have down in Grand Murray. So that's kind of a nice project for them. And then Rowan earlier was here, and we had spoken at great length about a safety concern when phone and internet services were cut out on Pike Lake Road earlier this summer. And there was a total of 20 days with that outage. He has gone to the Northeast Regional Emergency Communications Board to share our concerns and also the Minnesota Department of Public Safety because there's a consistent lack of response by CenturyLink. It fits kind of a larger pattern that we've seen. And they are going to continue to push and use whatever leverage possible to secure better service for our citizens here in Cook County. But I just wanted to let you know he was really working on that.
Commissioner Mills, first, also.
And I will just follow up on that. We, after all the extensive work that was done out in the Hovland area and all throughout District 1 by CenturyLink, we continue this year to have 911 outages, grand portage. Hovland has had, right now, it's probably just over a handful, but it's, they've been coming in a little more consistently. Gunflint had some earlier. And so, yeah, it is an issue. There is, there are continuing to be problems. And I think the biggest thing that I want the public to know on this is we're pressing hard on CenturyLink and their partners to improve this. But what we haven't been able to do yet is to get them to actually set up a process where there is preventive maintenance that is done on this. They're claiming that due to our geographic location and things, that they will come up and work on things when they need to be worked on, but they're literally run to failure. They don't come up and do any preventative maintenance. They don't change out components. They don't do anything like that. And for a service like 911, I just don't agree with that. And we let them know that. But that's just, you know, that's in their court, and that's between the state and, because they're contracted through the state to provide these services, so.
Right. Commissioner Mills?
That's very, that's very helpful to know both from you, Madam Chair, as well as you, Commissioner Solson. I just also wanted to point out, we were one of the houses affected by that outage and my neighbors as well, and a lot of frustrations there, a lot of communications there. It's a lot of, I wouldn't say rage, but it's getting there. And I just wanted to commend one of our employees, Scott Benelken, who was actively out, of course, on the project, looking at what's being done with the contractor, but also reaching out to people in the neighborhood in that area, asking if they have service or not. And I just thought that was wonderful to see him out and about, really trying to hone in where the problem is and how we can address it. So shout out to him there. And, yeah, the rest of the Highway Department too, just trying to navigate all that difficult situation. Very frustrating. But I have a phone right now, so, so there's that. Counter blessings.
Commissioner Mills?
Separate topic, just in regards to our public comment this morning. A lot of great questions asked. Typically, it's not the role of the board to respond to questions during public comment. That time is to hear and listen to the concerns of the public. A lot of those questions are pretty easily answered. And so I just want to remind the public that we all are available outside of the meeting to discuss these. Minister Yorki is very available as well. Maybe a little more difficult right now during staffing, temporary staffing changes. But there's just some communication that can happen, and we can respond outside of the meetings a lot easier. So I just want to encourage anyone who has questions or concerns to do just that. And most of those, most of those questions are easily answered from today.
And some of those questions were, in fact, answered later in the meeting.
True that, true that, yep. That being said, some of the questions are not easily answered as far as our bigger problems, challenges like housing. That's not an easy answer there, so. That being said, really appreciate the public comments. Very important to hear what's out on people's minds, so.
Yes, it's nice to be back in person and have people giving input in person. I said this the other day to somebody that they were watching online these meetings. And I said, you know what? I think there's a different dynamic that you get being in here in person rather than watching a live stream. And so I'm excited to see this room full of people today. It is helpful to me as a Commissioner to see people.
It would also, I'm sorry. It would also be good to note that we are at a high level of community transmission of COVID right now. We did have 57 new cases last week. So there's the other side of that. We actually do want people to be here and to participate. The timing right now is not opportune. But, you know, we're going through, we're going through a surge of new cases. Presumably, that'll taper off again. So just to note that because it's kind of timely.
Commissioner Solson?
I'll make just one comment in addition to what was said already on our public speakers. And that was, on the first public speaker, the questions that she was putting forward, I appreciated the fashion in which she did it and the tone and tenor that she took with that. But having had the discussion with her on these topics, we had some of the discussions, we had some answers, we had these things. I believe, and I'm always at risk speaking for someone or trying to read intent, but as part of that conversation, she shared that she had a very extensive list of questions that she thought the board should have asked while we were going through those topics. And so I think part of this was feedback to us in a means of demonstration of further questions to get to specificity on some things that maybe she at least didn't hear in that. So I only share that in that, I know we're all open to that feedback from our constituents. And I think that was part of the message that I didn't want it missed as we go through this. Because I always encourage that feedback to make sure if I'm not thinking down there or, and I try, I try and I know others do, that you ask questions just to make sure, even though it's apparent to you because you've read all the materials and things, but you try to get it out there so that the public knows we've thought about it. So just think about some of those questions from that perspective as we go forward.
Very good point.
Thank you. Good point. Absolutely. Well, we have some meetings coming up. We have our community leadership meeting this Thursday at 5:30 via Zoom. And then there's some sales tax report and the Grand Murray Art Colony letter. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. As far as that sales tax report is concerned, that triggered a thought and a little bit of discussion we had earlier, that we had at the Public Health and Human Services Board meeting that Auditor Powers was not with us for regarding the 1% sales tax and the expiration of it. It sounds like we're well ahead of schedule there. It was suggested by a community member, Bill Hanson, that there's opportunity for money to go into the general fund once we pay off those bonds. I just wanted to get your feedback on that. Also, any projections you might have?
I haven't looked at projections recently, so I don't have anything to report. But as you say, we are well ahead of where we thought. We're very conservative on what we actually bonded for, including the transportation sales tax bonding, and we're way ahead on both of those. I expect them to pay off early. How early, I would, I'd rather come back at another meeting and look at it.
Yes, please.
Give you a projection and guess at it here. But, and I don't believe you can plan to leave money and extend, but it ends when you pay off your bonds. And if there is, if there just happens to be money left over, you can put that in your general fund and decide to use it. So you might have some, you know, plan in mind there. We did it originally, we used it for, because we had a sales tax that expired in about 2008. That was for the rebuild of the hospital at that time, is what it was used for. And we gave it to them, actually, to use in the spirit of the same purpose. It's historical, but.
Well, yeah, I appreciate a further analysis of, or a projection of when that might expire. And it would be helpful in our conversation, I think, as a board to understand the limitations and the potential uses. It was stated that there is a significant chunk of time and/or money that could give opportunity. And that surprised me to hear about that. And so I just wanted to hear about your understanding. And, you know, when you give that projection, I think it would be helpful to talk more about the restrictions or lack thereof that we have.
Commissioner Solson?
I think what was important, to your point, Commissioner Mills, was he inferred, Brady, that this, that that bonding would end at the end of the payoff period or at a date. And he inferred that the board could decide. In other words, if I paid it off on this date, I could continue to collect that up until this date and use those funds towards something. That was what the inference was, and I think that's what Commissioner Mills is saying. Is that right?
Laws change.
Yeah.
And I don't know that that, I wasn't aware of that when the previous one expired.
Well, that's what made all of us kind of go, really?
Yeah.
You know, so that's really where the questioning was, for me, anyway. That's where that was coming from. If there was a vehicle there in a horizon of possible money availability to be used, whether it was for, and we were, the discussion at the time was the childcare money that we used. How do we pay that going forward? Because clearly you don't want to continue to use your fund, you know, your reserve funds for that, and you're not able to because you're going to run out. So that was where that discussion was coming from, just for a little bit more background.
Yep. The, I think the inference of the statement was that whichever was latter, whichever was later, whether the payoff or that scheduled payoff date. And maybe that's where the board's discretion comes in. That was coming from state statute, and that's beyond my comprehension. So maybe Attorney Hickon can help it. On your spare, with your spare time, yeah. I'll interpret by Auditor Powers.
I don't think we can do that.
Okay. That'd be so great to hear more about that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anything else? How did you entertain a motion?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Oh, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all.
I thought you had something more fun to share.
[laughing] Oh, thank goodness I didn't, huh?